That's where she is. So it's the plan to move as much as we can to Thursday evening. We've rescheduled for Thursday at 6:30 for anything that we cannot handle tonight. So what we will first do is look to approve warrants. Look to a motion to approve the withholding warrant of May 17th, 17, of ninety-eight thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars and seventy-six cents. Look to approve the payroll warrant of June 20th, 17, of two-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand one hundred and fifty-one dollars and three cents. And to approve the expense warrant for June, I mean June 20th, 17, of one-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand three-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars and five cents.
I'll make the motion to approve all free warrants at the indicated sums.
Thank you, and I'll second that and a discussion. Seeing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No one's opposed, motion passes. Announcements, Tyler Warren and District Attorney Senator Ian Goby will be holding office hours at Brookfield Town Hall from 2:00 to 3:00 p.m. Wednesday, June 21st. All are welcome. Public access, anybody wish to address the board this evening? Seeing none, we'll move off to the agenda. Tonight we have Tom Dorsey, correct, to join us to talk about town email, website, and changeover, so we will try to do that because you are here. So come on up and join us. Now, while you're joining us, one of the things that we want to talk about is microphone etiquette. So let's be as clear and concise as we can be with the microphones in the future. We did have some complaints from the local access, so we're going to try to be better sharing. Thank you. So what do we need to know?
Well, over the past year, I've worked with Canon Communications. We've got the email system pretty much up and ready to go. I just talked with them, I believe it was last evening. So right now, within the next couple of days, we'll disseminate the new emails and the passwords to all the users. Given a chance to access the new email system. If they have any questions, they can contact me. I'll try to answer them the best that I can. It's a fairly new system myself as well, so a little bit of it, I'm learning as well. But I think it'll be an awesome system for the town. There'll be unlimited emails, so the email boxes won't fill up.
Till we're going to the cloud?
Right, eh, kind of, sort of, yeah.
Kind of, sort of.
So who's the email through again?
It's Canon Communications. It's a smart mail.
Okay, so it's still a smart mail-based system?
Yes, yeah. It's a more secure system. You can actually transmit...
Encrypted email?
Yes.
Okay, so it's got encryption capabilities?
What they've told me is you can actually transmit credit card information between users, and that information will not leave the server. So as long as you don't put up an at symbol indicating for it to go past the server, it will stay there and it will not go up to the internet.
And I presume they automatically handle the requisite archiving for the state and all that?
Yes, it has all the archiving for it and whatnot. Once I learn how that's accessible, then I can pass it on to Karen. I'll work with Karen and whoever else she needs to make sure that they're able to update the emails or make any changes to emails, et cetera. Most of it'll be, all this email setup is pretty much through Canon Communications. They'll set the emails up. So it's pretty easy, it's pretty streamlined.
If possible, when you're going to train Karen, if you could let me know. I don't know if I can make it or not, but I'd like to at least be informed about how the system works.
Yeah, absolutely.
That'd be great.
Yep.
So the website side of it?
Yep.
What's the action or activity around the website?
So Karen and I both discussed about the emails and the website. We decided that it was best that we get the emails fixed first. Get that going. Everybody's been having issues with the email.
Yep.
So now that we've got that, we have the contract for the website, which I'd like to have signed. Once that's signed, we can move forward with the design and getting that going. And that'll be through Virtual Town. It used to be Virtual Town Hall, but it's now Virtual Towns and Cities, or I think it is, or Virtual Town and Schools. It's a professional site. A lot of the communities have gone to it. It allows for individual users to be able to post their information and documents to the website on their own. You don't need an IT person, per se, to update all that information. Department heads can update their own information.
Excellent.
Do you know what it's based on?
As far as the technology?
The interface for the department ads?
I believe it's a, for updating whatnot, I believe it's an email-type system where they're able to type out an email, and once they upload it, it posts to the website.
What, a form perhaps?
Yeah, I believe so.
Here we go. As far as that. When we get ready to do that, we'll just say...
Well, that's, yeah, there's some information in the packet regarding that. The contract's actually there. I don't know if we want to address it today, or is that the Thursday as well?
I'm thinking that's what we want to do. Yes, so is there something, so there's a need to sign?
To move forward with the website, we have to sign the contract. Once it's signed, they will start going to work to design the website. They will meet with whoever we want to decide what we want as content, how we want to design it, how we want it laid out.
So the action for tonight could be a motion that the chair sign?
I just wanted to make sure about those other reservations.
I actually got an opportunity to read through the license agreement, and what I heard via third party does not appear to be accurate. So it appears that the content is actually still owned by us, which is my primary concern, and that we can get the content back. If we decide after a year that we're not satisfied with the level of service, we have the option to take our content elsewhere. So I'm actually comfortable with the contract.
All right, so then what I do is entertain a motion to sign the, the chair sign the contract?
Do you have a motion?
Pardon me?
Well, I can make a motion for you to sign, actually. We can just do it tonight.
Oh, okay, all right.
I'll make a motion for the vice chair to sign the contract.
So I'll second that. Anything, any further discussion on that topic? Seeing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No one's opposed, motion passes. So...
Karen has my contact information. You folks have any questions or need any information, feel free to contact me. Usually the best time to get ahold of me is in the evenings.
All right, so just the one signature?
I believe so, yeah.
This is two separate, they're both the same kind of...
Yeah, I'll sign both, just so...
That way they can sign the copy with the original and get us one with the original signatures back?
For those of you that have just joined us, just an FYI that Linda has had a family emergency and is not here this evening, so we're going to try to just do only the things that we need to be doing tonight. So that was that topic. All right, so the next topic, thank you.
Oh, good.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for the help with my email.
You're very welcome.
Appreciate that.
All right, folks, have a great night.
All right, thanks, Tom. So the next thing on the agenda is that we do have a report from UMass on the Adena Project, the Camp Town Project, where we have identified through the dig portion of the Adena Project that there are additional features that confirm that the campground is in fact a historic site. We have two phases left on the activity with Mass Historical to complete the documentation and complete the certification for it to be recognized as a national historic site. So what I've asked for for tonight is a request for the, a motion for the board to pay the Phase Two bill when it comes in, subject to the Mass Historical approval of the Phase Two report. Are you good with that, Karen? All right, Beth, are you good with the motion that we pay the Phase Two bill subject to Mass Historical's approval of the report?
I'll make the motion that we sign that based on the Mass Historical approval.
And second, and any other discussion? And with that?
Good progress.
We're getting there. We are absolutely getting there. So with that, motion to, we accept the motion? Signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No one's opposed, motion passes.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure, David, yes.
Do you have public access at some point?
I did. But, yes, I said public access just before, I don't want to... I was very, I even looked at you, but please join us.
I just want to give you something, that's all.
Oh, good.
I'll make it brief.
No, no.
I know you're going to be doing appointments.
What's that?
I know you're going to be doing appointments.
We're not.
Maybe, but...
We're not.
We're not?
Okay, but I'm just giving you in mind, if you want someone on the advisory board that's going to be dedicated and honest and representing the town folk and not the special interest group, you can consider me. But if you want me to work strictly for you guys in a special interest group in town, don't put me on, if you have an opening.
No, thank you for that.
That's clear.
Okay, thank you.
So you continue, as I understand it, on the planning board?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I mean elected, that's a fixed term.
Yep, yep.
Why are they turning this off?
Yep, thank you. So, any other public access? All right, no, Ken's going to go someplace else. All right, good. So we're going to move to CMRPC Consulting Contract. And again, this is something where we need to move forward, and again, something that Linda has reviewed, so I would propose that we move forward with it tonight to entertain a motion to allow the chair to sign the CMRPC Contract Proposal for the Scope of Services to serve as consultants for the planning board.
Well, I'll make a motion that the vice chair sign on behalf of the board.
So, and I'll only turn to, and Sharon's giving us the nod that Linda actually has to...
It does have to be the chair?
So we are motioning that we are authorizing the chair to sign as soon as the chair is able to come.
I'll sign, okay.
All right? That's the motion.
I will amend my motion to reflect the chair.
All right, and then I will second that. Any other discussion on that motion? Seeing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no one's opposed, so therefore that passes. So that's taken care of that. All right, next on the list. Again, something we need to do is that we have a bid. There was one bidder pre-qualified to, that Seal Coating Incorporated from Rancheck Tree with a bid of eight dollars and fifty-three cents a gallon, and converts to four point, four dollars and nineteen cents a yard. And so with that, I'd offer that we entertain a motion to award the bid to road mater, bid of road materials to Seal Coating Incorporated, Rancheck Mass, for eight dollars and fifty-three cents a gallon, which converts to four dollars and nineteen cents a square yard.
You have that motion?
And I'm seconding, and any other discussion on that motion? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, signify by saying no? No one's opposed, motion passes. All right, takes care of that one. Okay, wage authorizations. Linda did review that earlier today as a part of the personnel board, so I feel comfortable that we can make this motion this evening to authorize the signing of the wage authorizations for FY '18. So with that, I'd like to entertain a motion for, and now Karen, did you want us to do by department or just the whole list?
Well, what Linda said, what they decided, what they did today, when they met with the personnel board, to make it easier for themselves to, and she suggested you do it, is read out the departments, if anyone has any questions, and you can go one by one.
Okay, all right.
We're initially reading out the departments.
All right, so I'm going to read off what's included in this folder. So the authorizations include the accountant, treasurer, Treasury Department, the town clerk, admin assistant, municipal clerks, wiring inspector, plumbing inspector, building inspector, zoning enforcement officer, animal control officer, assistant to the animal control officer, assessors department, water department, highway department, emergency squad, police department, library, cemetery department, elections, transfer station, and conservation commission secretary. So a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion.
Second, any further discussion? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye? Yeah, we're going to have to go through...
Aye.
Anybody, aye, and no one's opposed, so therefore motion passes, and we end up signing away.
Signing away.
So let me see what we can do while you start to sign. For each transfer... Okay, so let's go. This will take some time.
You mentioned the schools, is school on this?
No.
That's separate?
And I would imagine the school committee has to do that. Nope, so we'll have to keep a clean place here.
Okay. Oh, it's the whole department, I missed those.
Department together, so we'll have to give it back to you.
What am I just doing? Set something up in the future, maybe just assign it after.
Yep. That's probably a good idea.
I'm starting to expect...
Yep, I know you have. I'm almost probably... I saw Peter left from the fire department.
Paramedics right now. Oh, interesting.
Okay.
Board of Library Trustees voted and approved to reestablish their signing authority for library personnel at their Wednesday, June 14th meeting. The duties and responsibilities of the governing board is legally responsible for administrative policy making in such areas as budget, personnel, and contracts as specified by state law.
Excellent.
So they have taken care of their own wage authorizations.
That's probably similar to David's question about the schools.
Well, I think they do that.
Oh, do they?
Absolutely. And that is just more than that.
Right, I mean, they were consistent with what we had voted at town meeting, so it's of no, you know, particular concern.
Interesting.
Okay.
So that one's, there's nothing for us to do?
There's nothing for us to do actually with all of those. We can start that packet.
All right.
There's some smaller ones here. Sorry for all of them.
Nope, we're good there. All right.
And Pete doesn't have his because I think he's working straight out in the news for the wage authorizations.
There was, there was no straightening it out for the hourly wages? The only thing that was required was we're going to have to probably, depending on what the scale of actual calls are, we're going to need to monitor the first quarter of expenditures, but that shouldn't change with the wage authorization.
Well, I know the first, I happened to be in the personnel board that was looking for the wage authorizations, and I know he had said that.
Ah. Could you email him, please?
I can't email from here, but I can...
Okay.
I don't know what's wrong, it's just...
I see if you can get that in time. I'm sorry, I'm behind.
You're doing fine. Oh, but you get to do that all by yourself.
You can take those home, or come back and do them.
I can come back and do those if I'm leisure, yeah. And I was wondering, I know that we wanted to hold off on any that we have like more than enough people, but I think there's a couple of smaller committees, like the Town Hall Improvement Committee, where we're going to establish that. I don't know that we have a full committee anyway.
Four or five people have...
Which I think would be enough to at least, which it would be enough to at least establish the committee.
Do you want to appoint him?
No, I would prefer we talk appointments on Thursday.
Wait, no, not now, I just wanted to see them.
Yes, please.
Please, yeah. Well, could you also add to that list the open space recreation? They're, the folks that are volunteers are just going to help set up to make sure we'll get the right people, but...
I see some quizzical looks in the, in the audience. We're holding up...
Oh, come on up, come on up. This isn't like a church, you can have them come around.
That's like churches, there's going to be more chairs back here.
Exactly, come, come up.
And they're going to be empty too.
Come up, come up.
So what we were saying is that we had originally planned on doing appointments tonight, but because we're missing the chair, we're not going to actually do the appointments until Thursday, so our apologies if that's why you're here today. Two days from now.
Here and now?
Here and now.
Here, at 6:30. And really, the only topic, the main topic will be the appointments.
We didn't want to leave our chair out of the whole discussion around the appointments, so...
Am I the only one who knew that it was camp, it wasn't camp?
No.
No, it's just this is about as crowded as the select board meetings generally are.
So people who are getting appointments don't show up?
Frequently they don't.
Oh.
Nope.
I didn't even know that I was supposed to or not.
Okay, so, right, and if you wanted to like introduce yourself, that would be fine, because...
Right now?
Yeah, sure.
Hi, I'm Maureen Dury.
Oh, there we go. Maureen, seeing your resume, thank you, yes.
Yes.
Very much appreciate you volunteering. Very much.
Very much, thank you.
Yes.
I don't know if you want me, but if you offer anything, I'll go.
You have some background that's important.
Yeah, you have a very strong financial background, which is really exciting, yeah.
I do.
Excellent. Don't mind us, we have things that we can do without the chair, and we're going to try to be as efficient as we can to support her. Fortunately, she had a family emergency that she had to attend to.
That's all right, I suggested to her that it doesn't hurt to sit at a slot meeting once throughout the year or a week.
Absolutely.
It's not anymore, so...
Not bad, not bad. We do the best we can. All right, those are all back to you.
These are just about back to you.
Sharon, I hope you have some marching music or something for the video.
Just on your rear end, this was last minute. It was, it wasn't canceled per se, it just, we just said it was the last minute, our emergency's up, that's why we're not coming in. It's Maureen. Maureen, what did I tell you? Yeah. Most people call me Ellen, I don't know why, but people are like, I don't know.
There you go.
You know, more like... We call her Mo in the family, like, you know, Mo Larry.
You know, more like, he called her Mo in the family, like, you know, Mo Barry.
There are some that think I'm one of those characters as well, so not to worry.
That's okay. I keep threatening to change my name legally to just Beth.
Alright, so I think we got those.
You can keep talking and I'll keep deciding.
I could do stand-up, I could do better. Okay, so I'm gonna double check these. Alright, let's, um, let's, um, let's, um, let's, um, oops, there's some that are not. Are we there?
We're there.
We're there, alright.
We've arrived.
We have arrived. Alright, so that takes care of those, that takes care of that. We did do one thing successfully tonight. Alright, moving off to agenda topic number, number six. Municipal wage transfers. Wage transfers. We didn't do that, so we can do this. I'd entertain a motion to sign the following municipal transfers. So, how do we wanna do this?
If you hand them to me, I'll make the motions by amount of transfer.
There you go, go for it.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we transfer the amount of ten thousand, one hundred and nine dollars and eighty-seven cents from the town accountant, accounting clerk, account number zero, zero, one, one, three, five, five, one, one, zero, dash, zero, zero, one, to account audit, zero, zero, one, dash, one, three, five, five, two, zero, five, dash, zero, zero, zero.
Make that, you made a motion, and I'm seconding it. And I think there's another one here.
What, what?
Oh, you wanna do each, okay, alright, so that, those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed? No one's opposed, motion passes. So that's the first one.
I'd like to make a motion that we transfer the amount of, um, twenty, twenty-two hundred sixty dollars from the seasonal account, zero, zero, one, four, two, two, five, one, one, zero, 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 six, to the highway operator account, zero, zero, one, four, two, two, five, one, 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 zero, 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 one.
I'll second that. Those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No one's opposed, motion passes.
I'd like to make the motion that we transfer the sum of fourteen hundred twenty-five dollars from the flagger police detail account, zero, zero, one, four, two, two, five, one, one, zero, 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 five, to the administrative assistant salary account, zero, zero, one, four, two, two, five, one, one, zero, 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 four.
I'll second that. Those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed? No one's opposed, motion passes, and we got a little bit more done tonight.
Did.
Alright, so, next on the list is the FY18 appointments, and again, we'd look to hold that. We have in fact posted a meeting for 6:30 on Thursday evening, same time, same place, on Thursday to act upon the appointments, and the other thing I would say is that if the family emergency continues, we will look to schedule it so that the chair can be present. And with that, item number eight on the agenda is a discussion around July 4th holiday. And again, Karen, I would propose that we hold that till Thursday as well. And then item nine is other. Okay, so that's that, we have other, and we have an opportunity. We voted at town meeting to purchase a new truck, and with that, we have located a truck for purchase. And with that, I'd entertain a motion to allow the highway department to purchase a Ford 2017 450 from MHQ of Marlboro, Mass for a total of forty-five thousand, six hundred and forty-nine dollars.
Do you have that motion?
And I have a second, any discussion? With that, those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No one's opposed, motion passes. And is that the only thing in here, Karen? Does it look like?
That's it.
That was it? Okay, that's the rest of that. Alright, so with that, unless there is something else that needs to come to fore us, once twice sold, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Unless there's something that's-
Can we go into executive, because executive session is listed.
Is it one of, it's under one of those?
It is, it is under that, it's, um, if you give me the list of exceptions, it's for the contract negotiations.
Ooh, okay, alright, we can do that.
So I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session and that we, that we reconvene an open session solely for the purposes of adjourning the meeting. And that would be-
Number three, number three, Maria?
Yeah, it is, under number three.
Alright, so we have a motion, Snyder, aye?
Coffin, aye.
And so with that, we'll adjourn, and then we'll only come back here to leave. Thank you very much for joining us.
We'll trust that you luck.
Fair enough, thank you.
Thank you.